Okay. I want to call the order of the regular city council meeting of Tuesday, July 2nd. It is 6:16. Public comments and announcements. Paul, you here?
How are you?
Paul Robinson. I'm from Dickinson, and I produced the Texas Outlaw Challenge, which we just had a couple of weeks ago. And I just wanted to report to council that it was a huge success. Weatherman fought us right to the last minute with all the, can I say, hell and high water? But certainly the high water. But our guests came from out of state at the last minute. We had an increase from last year. We had almost 100 boats, which was very good, and 1,000-plus people just came because they knew the weather was going to break, and it did. We had great event out on the lake Friday morning. We were able to accept an invitation from the Lakewood Yacht Club, who hosted our raceboats Friday morning. That was just beautiful. We had continental breakfast out there. We had tents and umbrellas. Members came out and watched us. We just had a great invitation in kind of a bar that was reset for the event with that participation. So I really want to thank the city for sponsoring us on our 17th year and look forward to application supplemental on the 19th to ask for funds again for our 18th year in 2025. Just commenting really quickly on the application, there's one new item on here I thought I'd bring attention to. The application asks for proof of established hotel promo code. So I wasn't sure what that was. So I spent half the afternoon going to all our six hotels and Beacon, real nice renovation going on there. That's going to be really nice. And the report from the hotels was two said that they were not interested in participating with the code. Two said they couldn't due to corporate policy that they're only allowed to use their own promo codes in their systems. And this is all new information and lingo for me. One didn't understand what I was asking for, and I was trying to get the information from them. What is the city asking for? And the last person, place Moses, great guy, great general manager at Quality Inn, he said, "Paul, we'll give it a try. I think I can make it work." He said, "But it won't give you accurate data." And I said, "Well, why is that?" He says, "Well, because 90% of people who rent rooms go to Expedia or Travelocity or one of these third-party savings places." And he says, "That does not connect in our system to a code that's third-party." He said, "So I'll try my best, but," he says, "it won't give you accurate data." And I said, "Well, that won't be any different from 17 years of effort, but we'll keep trying." So just a heads up on that. Applications are due on the 19th. Maybe you can help me understand that a little better. If there is a path to take, I'll be willing to take it. But at this point, I'll only have one hotel with a promo code on the 19th. So thank you. Thank you very much again. Great success. Thanks for showing up.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay. Item 1.1, Mayor and city council may make, and city staff may make announcements about community-city events. Are you still on there? Are you still on there?
Go ahead.
Yes, I am. All right. So there are a couple of things coming up. We have the Fourth of July Parade on, coincidentally, the Fourth of July. It's at 9:30 to noon. It starts at Miramar Plaza and goes through to Major Park. Show up for hot dogs. Roderick will be cooking. Rotary will be cooking them. It's going to be a fun day. Movie night at Major Park is the movie that is Saturday, July 20th at 7:00 PM at Public Works. Well, correction, there is a program at 7:00 PM. 8:00 PM, the movie starts, and that will be at Major Park. Cookies with a Cop on Wednesday, July 31st, 11 to 12. That's at the library. I stopped by Cupcakes with a Cop last, that was kind of cool. If there's anything I've missed, please let us know.
I appreciate it. Thanks. Anybody else? Thanks, Rob. 2.0 presentations. 2.1, presentation of a post-event report from Keels &amp; Wheels Concorde d'Elle Gantz 2024. Patty.
Gail, I believe you have our PowerPoint. Is that correct? I'm going to transfer back over there. You let me drive over there.
That's fine. That's great. Thank you.
I'm going to drive over there.
Okay. I'll just point. I'm Patty Ng with Keels &amp; Wheels Concorde d'Elle Gantz, and I'm here with Gary Garnett, who's from our Board of Directors and over marketing. We wanted to report a post-event for our Keels &amp; Wheels, another successful year. And here comes our PowerPoint. There it is. That is a picture from this Keels &amp; Wheels, early in the morning, if you can see it, on the Saturday when it wasn't raining.
It's in Adobe in there, so it's a scroll situation.
This is our 28th year for Keels &amp; Wheels. As you see in this first picture, these are the keels. These are the boats. And we had about 55 boats this year. You can see we have typically focused on the older boats, the classic and the antique boats. In the Antique and Classic Boat Society, they consider an antique boat that is 25 years old. That means a boat built in 1999. Just let that sink in. So that is antique. Just letting you know. But most of the boats were from the older thing. And then the other one, the next picture, is our wheels. And our wheels come from all different types of venues. We have the antique cars. We have pre-war and post-war, both from American and European, as well as what we call supercars or collectible cars. And you can see some of the examples of what we have there that we're really excited about that we had this year. Always fun to see the big collection of cars. The cars come from all over the United States, many from museums and from collectors that we literally ship down from these other places and other collectors. And our next slide shows what we call marks, and these are the two featured vehicles that we had for this year. We were celebrating the 60th year of the Ford Mustang, and that was really exciting. We had about 35 Mustangs this year. And then we were also celebrating 60 years of Donzy. Donzys are a boat that were created by a boat racer by the name of Don Aronow, and he really focused on speedboats. And so they've been going fast from day one, and we were really excited to have about 18. And when they start up, you can't miss the engines are very loud and fun, and we really appreciated having the Donzys and their representation this year at Keels &amp; Wheels. On the next slide, we're going to point out some new things that were at Keels &amp; Wheels. First of all, that red Mustang in the corner, that's the very first convertible Mustang made. When Ford pulled the drapery off of their new Mustang, that's the car they were showing, and we got to have it as a part of Keels &amp; Wheels. Eric Lippert, who is our Collector of the Year, that's one of his collections. If you went to the show, you probably noticed he really likes one specific color. And any guesses? Red. That's right, because every car he collects is red. But we were really privileged to be able to show that first Mustang. Right underneath, we had five different Resto Mod makers from around the country that brought examples of their word. Resto Mods are a combination of restoration and modifications on vehicles, and they had cars and trucks and all kinds of interesting things. One of the things they do with restoration is trying to make it close to as when it first came off the assembly line, and the modifications may be some of the changes they have to make, either for legal or for other reasons, like putting air conditioning in some kinds of those cars. Very important here in Texas. Up in the right-hand corner, from the Texas Parks and Wildlife, the Captain Murchison Patrol Boat, that's an 80-foot catamaran. It's almost brand-new. It was his first public showing. It is owned by Texas Parks and Wildlife but run by one of their departments, the Texas Game Warden. They're very involved with security and national security. They stop people trying to illegally get into the country through the waterways. They also keep people from doing any kind of illegal fishing, and they help with disasters as well as rescue boats. And we were so excited to have them as part. They gave free tours of that boat. It's fully stocked with kitchens and beds that can be out on the water for four days. It was really an impressive sight and very exciting to have it here in Seabrook for the very first time for its showing. It docks down in Port Aransas and did make it up for the trip. And our last first was the Hill Country Motorhead's Motorcycle Museum. We've been wanting to have a motorcycle display for some time. We had 18 antique motorcycles starting in 1904 and forward. Many of them look like bicycles with lawnmower engines on them, but they were really exciting to have there, and we know that we will be continuing our relationship with them and just keep it building on our motorcycle display. The next slide is just a sample of some of our sponsors that we had. You'll notice a couple from Seabrook. We had the Seabrook Plaza, as well as Compass by Margarita. And on the other side, Task with John Berkland was also very well represented, as well as the City of Seabrook. We could not do this without the City of Seabrook as an event partner and a host city, and we are very grateful for all the support that was helping us with this event. On the next slide, I wanted to quickly show you some of the nonprofit organizations that were represented at Keels &amp; Wheels. We provide free opportunities for them to be at Keels &amp; Wheels and also be able to talk about the organizations. And some of these organizations, we also sponsor throughout the year with various silent auction items or other support. The CCISD provides us with one of our biggest help here in Seabrook, and that is Parking Lot right over here and Bay Elementary School. We wouldn't be able to do it without them, and we're real excited that they've been a part of us, and we paid them a token fee just to make that happen. We had one other new parking area, Concrete's, very important for us because of the weather, and it was at the Houston Methodist Hospital, and we were really grateful for that as well. On our next slide, I just wanted to show you some of the businesses here in Seabrook that we contribute money, and some of this is thousands and thousands of dollars every year, not just from the money Seabrook gives us, but from all of our sponsors and other money that we earn. It goes to these Seabrook companies right there. You're Printing Now, Lakeside Yachting Center, Lakewood Yacht Club, Crown Trophy, Travel Zone, Blue Dolphin, just to mention a few. Social Media by Mail, tens of thousands of dollars that go to these companies. So we are supporting certainly our charities and our nonprofits, but we also are supporting our fellow businesses that are here in the area, and we're proud to do so here in Seabrook. Now, what everybody asks about, of course, is how do the hotels do? Like our other partners in crime here with the hotels, I contact every hotel in the city of Seabrook and ask to talk to people, try to get them to see if they would provide a special rate for us, for the rooms, for the people coming in, to see if they have best contact information. We take all of that. We put it on the website with hyperlinks. On the left-hand side, you'll see a sample from the website itself that shows all the information plus the hyperlinks that people can go to. This year, we want to report that we had 186 rooms. That was 169 from Spring Hill Suites and a couple from Quality Inn. But we don't want, we want to recognize the Seaside RV Park because they had 11 trailers and four cabins that were rented. So we were really excited about that. They have a sister site that is in Kima, and they have out the same, too. A lot of folks that come to exhibit bring their trailers with their cars and their boats in with us, and they just are on the circuit, and it's convenient for them to use their trailers. So we appreciate their support, and they had reached out to us, and we were happy that they were here. Quickly on the marketing plan, I wanted to tell you that I did provide a written report that's available that had sent to Lexi that has a lot more detail on our marketing plan, all of the steps. You can see our big sign that hangs proudly over NASA Road 1 that we're happening to have. I just have a few little bullet points there. But we did do television. We did a lot of television advertising. We did website advertising. We did e-blast. We did social media advertising, as well as having social media sites all pre. And then we had Saltwater Wheat Recon doing a 24-hour livestream during the entire show. In Wheel Time came and did their podcast live from Keels &amp; Wheels both days. We did do TV interviews, two sets with KHOU and I-45 Now during the show, and then several other things that we were doing during the show to promote, as well as in events. We do have our analytics for this. There are too many to put on the slideshow, so we did put it in the written report, and I have even more details from KHOU and KPRC if anyone is interested. This is our budget for the show. It's around $600,000, and that itemizes basically what we're spending it on. And then I've also targeted some of our hot fund eligible expenses that are in there. Our next slide shows you our attendance. We had about 4,000 people. Saturday was a spectacular day. We had great weather. It wasn't too hot. Lots of people came. And then we had Sunday with rain. But people still came. They want to see the cars. They want to see the boats, and boats get wet anyway, so people were happy to be there. We did have 200 vehicles, 50-plus boats, 54 financial and in-kind sponsors, 10 nonprofit organizations, multiple vendors on and off-site during that time, and, as I said, 4,000 attendees. For the last two slides, I just put a few familiar faces that some up there. If you can look and see, you might see somebody that you know, although you can't because you're on the, I don't know if you can see that. You're on the slides, just telling you. But anyway, we had slides. We really appreciated combining our efforts with the City of Seabrook party on Friday night. That was a really great event, and we're always happy to do that. And then on the last slide, just a few more opportunities to see other people that were there. Once again, we want to say thank you to the City of Seabrook for all of your help, for your financial support, for your security help, for your advisory capacity and everything that you've done for us. So thank you, and we look forward to putting in our application on July 19th also for the 29th Annual Keels &amp; Wheels. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patty. Has anybody got any questions of Patty?
Or Gary? Thank you.
Thanks. Or Gary?
Good job.
Okay. 2.2, presentation of the annual review by Corruthers Coastal Gardens 501(c)(3) for the Coastal Community Garden Project.
Two pages, double-spaced. This will be quick. Gail, can you give me the screen back, please, ma'am? There we go. Mayor, Council, and staff, on behalf of Corruthers Coastal Gardens 501(c)(3) and the members and volunteers of Corruthers Community Garden, want to extend our heartfelt thanks once again for helping us to achieve so many goals this season. The execution of the garden operating agreement has been a huge step in boosting our standing in the community, and we want you to know that we really appreciate it. Last couple of months, we've seen a lot of improvements in the garden. The new fence, new fence is fantastic. I don't know if you've been by to see it yet. We're currently working on a bed that'll run the entire length there on the right side of the slide. They'll be planted with everything from blackberries, beans, peas, and other vining vegetables and flowers to kind of create a living fence. The addition of electric metering device, you just have to take my word for it because I'm taking the city's, that there's apparently an electric metering device inside that gray box, so we'll see. Also, we upgraded the water system, or excuse me, the city upgraded the water system, so that's now separately metered, and we have a new two-inch line headed out there to the garden. So thank you so much for those improvements. The awning, a couple of you guys know, was literally about ready to collapse. The city came and added the post in the middle and several posts along the left side there. That's our tool storage area, so once again, we appreciate that. And last but not least, we appreciate the grants. So that will, you know, allow us to continue with our education programs and pay the bills. With spring harvest season winding down, we're happy to report that food donations so far this year have exceeded 360 pounds of fresh produce, so this should put us well over 600 pounds by the time fall gets here. Thanks to our relationship with Botanical Interest Seeds, we once again have been able to supply literally thousands of seed packets to the Harris County Public Library System, including, of course, our own Evelyn Metter branch. We also supplied seeds to Clear Creek Independent School District and the Gardens and Schools programs. We do this in partnership with League City Garden Club, and we've begun working with Bay Elementary to prepare their pollinator garden for fall planting. So we continue to manage two different Girl Scout troops who oversee the pollinator beds at both Hester and Corruthers. We're happy to announce our new apiary program. Generous Benefactor has given us three complete beehives here. The garden, that's a combined value of about 1,500 bucks is what it costs for, believe it or not, the hives, the bees, and everything that goes with it. So looking forward to soon, we'll be having Corruthers honey. And as you can see there, our hives are sponsored by Sherwin-Williams, who provide, they are the official sponsor of the beehives out at Corruthers. So they supply us with paint and materials and things like that that we need. So as great as all these things are, we're really happy with our latest announcement. Port of Houston has also recognized our contributions to the community, and in order to help us continue to work to help others, the port has seen fit to acknowledge our grant request for a greenhouse. We have been awarded $23,600 to fulfill that request. So we'll be working with staff over the next several weeks to confirm and finalize plans. Of course, we'll be pending the go-ahead from council, and we would hope to get this project started in the fall. So once again, I'd like to thank you guys for your continued support, making us one of the most outstanding gardens literally in the urban harvest network. So any questions?
Questions, council?
All right. Jackie? Thanks, guys.
I just saw you that by there this morning, and it looks great. Doesn't compare to my garden.
Well, it is a bad July. What can you say? So if you've got anything growing, you're ahead of us.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. 3.0, consent agenda. 3.1, approve the minutes of the June 11th, 2024, and June 18th, 2024 city council meetings.
Make a motion to approve.
Hang on. 3.2, consider and take all appropriate action on the second reading of ordinance 2024-12, the Water Conservation Drought Contingency Plan. An ordinance of the City of Seabrook, or City Council of City Seabrook, Texas, amending Chapter 95 Utilities, Article 3, Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Seabrook, Texas by deleting in its entirety. Sections 95-76 through 95-85, which contains the city's previous water conservation and drought contingency plan and replacing it with an updated Section 95-76 entitled Seabrook Water Conservation and Drought Contingency Plan, which contains the utility profile using the previous five years' water use data, updating the water conservation goals based on historic data, showing the update to the water rate structure and by incorporating the entire updated plan into the code. Providing a penalty in the amount not to exceed $500 for violation of any provisions hereof by inclusion into the code. Repelling all ordinances or parts of ordinances inconsistent or in conflict herewith, providing percebability and providing for an effective date. Now do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve consent agenda as written.
Second.
All in favor.
It's not the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, gotcha.
4.0, new business. 4.1, consider and take all appropriate action on the approval of a reallocation of remaining funds from the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Fund, and amending the fiscal year 2024 CIP program to reflect projects. Gail.
All right. Mayor and council, on the attachment for this item, I've recapped what we had last allocated. This was, again, the American Rescue Funds from the federal government that we were allocated based on a number of factors, and communities got different ranges of allocation. So ours in total was $3.5 million. Water and wastewater were eligible projects under this. At the time, we were deliberating the need to take back over the infrastructure for the main water distribution line, and that project with that CIP last year was put into place. And so that project closed out, and that is complete, leaving some additional funds with what we call the ARPA funds. The next eligible pocket of projects that we looked at on staff are what we call quality-of-life projects that are eligible. If you've noticed around the nation, a lot of the ARPA funds have gone to the park system in general. So we at staff have taken the liberty of looking at a number of projects that we think would add to the quality of life and the city park improvements overall. So I'll run down the proposed projects. Again, this is a proposition to council for reallocation of the remaining. In your agenda briefing, if you'll notice, what's critical on this ARPA funds reallocation is that by September 30th this year, we will need to be under contract for the remaining funds. We have until the end of September of 2026 to actually expend all those funds, but we will need to come back pretty quickly to council if this is a good direction with contracts to be solidified and signed by September 30th. So under citywide park improvements, our first proposed projects would be, all of the, majority of our playgrounds do not have shades, so being in this area, we're all fully aware that that can be challenging for young children to be out at any time in the midday. So we were proposing going with shade structures over the Pine Gully Playground, the Bay Brook Playground, and the Miramar Playground, and that would be approximately a cost of $104,000. And these will, you know, if approved tonight, we'll come back with final numbers, but these were the best estimates we could get to come with you tonight. The last meeting, we had a CIP workshop where we talked about some additional projects. We felt that council had a pretty good consensus to look at a project on the west side of 146, and we do have some space behind the splash pad next to Brummerhoff Park. So we are looking at some preliminary costs to put in at least two pickleball courts, and that would include parking and a seating area that would be adjacent to those courts. That's, obviously, it's sizable, looking at having to do all of those amenities in addition to just the court, so we've got an estimate of around $272,000. The next one was the basketball resurfacing at Bay Brook. So if you've been out there, we've done a resurfacing on the tennis courts that's adjacent to that basketball court, and we did have pretty good pricing, and that would be about $45,000 to resurface that basketball court. Moving on to Friendship Park, we did an upgrade here at Metter Park not too long ago. The Friendship Park restroom is the original design, so it's got the small pony walls. There's no privacy at all, and that is a highly utilized park with a lot of the baseball and Little League during the weekends. So this would be a proposed project to go in and make it look internally very similar to what we did over at Metter Park and be able to put a locking system on there so that we could have it open a little bit on the weekends and not have to have personnel lock it and unlock it outside of their normal working hours. Lastly, number five, this is a new project that staff's proposing, but if you're familiar with the Lucky Trails Marathon and walks and such, we have to have police manned there at Toddville because you usually have the flow go onto Toddville to get back into Hester Park. This pedestrian bridge proposal would be to go across the gully, thus letting pedestrians cross over the gully and not have to get back up onto Toddville. So those five projects would be our proposal tonight for a new reallocation of approximately $632,000 to close out the remaining ARPA funds. And I'll take any questions.
Any questions, council?
I thought we were going to probably do two of the pedestrian bridges, the other one over there by Pine Gully.
We looked at the Pine Gully Bridge. There's a little bit of a design issue as far as what we looked at on the staff side of, if we put that on the side that was in the diagram that we showed you. You're depositing in an area that we have to then cross the pedestrians back over on Toddville. We're also going to be looking at probably, hopefully, a new bridge in that area, and the lift station's going to have to move, so there was a lot of design issues on that one that just didn't, for staff's recommendation, didn't seem feasible at this time.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Move to approve. 4.1 is presented. Second.
All in favor. Thank you. 4.2, consider and take all appropriate action on Resolution 2024-15, authorizing the formation of an ad hoc committee for boats and other watercraft and approving up to three members of city council who serve the six-year, or the six-month term. I don't have that much time. A resolution of the city council of City Seabrook establishing an ad hoc committee to research and recommend local ordinances pertaining to but not limited to to research and recommend local ordinances pertaining to, but not limited to, Article II, boats and other watercraft, and recommend local ordinances pertaining to the subject, appointing members, defining roles and terms, and related matters. Discussion?
We have, we have really done a lot of research in the last couple of months, and we really believe that having a liaison between some of the organizations, some of the law enforcement agencies, to the city council, to staff, would be extremely helpful. So, we might be able to come up with ordinances to keep things like what we saw on Meyer, what we've seen in the channel, and we're going to see a lot more of, unfortunately, in the future, particularly if we have any, any kind of weather threats.
Yeah, we, we know of a number of boats still drifting around, still, still out on the, on the lake. We have, we have some marinas that are being inundated kind of with derelict boats that are just waiting to be let go. And so, you know, it's, it's, it's going to be a problem here this summer, and especially if we have a storm in, anywhere close to us, anyway. So, we are looking for a couple, you know, Tom's, Tom's been doing a lot of work, I've been doing a lot of work, but I think having a few more heads would... What's that? Well, I thought it was a question. Anyway, I think, I, I think we do have to come up with some, some type of an ordinance that we can, we can do and, and vote on and hash this out, so if anybody has any suggestions or anybody wants to volunteer?
I'll volunteer.
I'd like to volunteer.
Well, yeah, you, you were already in.
What you doing, you open your mouth?
Mayor, I think...
Yes. Rob?
I think he's volunteering.
Yes, I'd like to volunteer as well.
Oh, okay. All right, then, do we hear a motion?
Make a motion to approve 4.2, considering taking all action, approving the ad hoc committee?
Of who? Name the names. Name the names.
Rob Hefner, Buddy Hampton, Tom Tolet.
All in favor? Thank you. Got that, Gail? 4.3 Consider and Take All Appropriate Action on Resolution 2024-16, Adopting a Ceremonial Document Policy for the City. A Resolution to Adopt a Ceremonial Documents Policy for the City of Seabrook, Texas, Establishing the Purpose Types Criteria for Issuance, Procedures for Requests and Approval Process and the Presentation Here Thereof. Do you hear a motion?
Move to approve 4.3?
Second.
Discussion. Anybody have any questions? We all know why. Have you got that request in yet for the tree? Oh, okay, okay, I was just checking. It's in? Okay, great. I was just, I was just wondering. Okay, good. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. And we're to 4.4, are we ready? I take it, Sean? 4.4 Consider and Take All Appropriate Action on Request for Approval of Preliminary Plan Unit Development to Create World-Class Freezer Facility Plan Unit Development, 134,632 Square Foot Freezer Warehouse, 84 Vehicle Parking Spaces, and 19 Tractor Tray Loading Spaces Located on Approximately 7.19 Acres of Land. Sean?
So, I'd like to present to you the Planning and Zoning Commission's official report. The Planning and Zoning Commission, with unanimous consent, is recommending approval of the PUD with one recommended change to the PUD document itself. They're recommending that the PUD be modified to require a solid concrete eight-foot buffer fence along the sou- southern property line separating the hotel from the actual warehouse project.
The hotel is a residential classification, is it not?
It's, well, not per our code, it's not.
It's not?
It's not.
Because we are required to have a, between a property like that and a, and a residential...
That's correct. There would be a requirement, and they felt that it's something that the developer could include in, within the development that would create that buffer. There was no objection from the developer.
Okay. Okay.
I move to approve 4.4 as amended by P&amp;Z.
Second.
Discussion. Any, anything that anybody wants to add to the PUD?
As I wonder, what, what's the idea of the fence, how tall, how thick, or what material?
Typically, so, I think it's based on prior history. Along the border of the Town Center Project and the residential uses that are to the north of that project, there was a modification requirement for an eight-foot solid masonry, not masonry, solid concrete fence along that boundary. So, they were just using those parameters for the height, that if that commercial use is gonna be next to there with the restaurants and commercial uses, that it was adequate, and it's something historically that has been approved in the past.
The hotel is a two-story or is...
A three-story.
It's three-story, and there are rooms on the bottom floor.
That's correct.
So, it is gonna be solid?
It's, yeah, solid. So, what, what they imagine that will be constructed is some sort of fence creek, four, probably four sections of fence creek along that area, along the length of that whole southern boundary of the property.
Okay, thank you.
Just wanna say one thing. You know, I, I do wanna recognize and acknowledge the concern over traffic, and I think that is, is an issue, and it's gotta be resolved. But I can take you back that the drawbridge going to Kima didn't get replaced because nobody was using it. We didn't get the expansion on 146 because nobody was using it, and this is just gonna bring additional pressure. We're gonna have a world-class, you know, facility. The traffic will bring additional pressure and notice to the county, TechDOT, and the port's already aware of it, and so this, this may be the catalyst that we get to, to fix that intersection.
Anyone else?
Tom?
Yes.
I will say, I don't know what would be better there. I just know that the residents are very vocal about this, giving away this last chunk of property that, you know, we have, pretty much to, you know, facilitate the port. But, I mean, I would love to see them to be able to do some sort of access road on the north side past this, you know, so they could cut over to, from 146, you know, but I don't know. So, that's just a thought. That's it, thank you.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've had discussions with TechDOT with Bill, when Bill Fredericks had the property, and, and TechDOT was pretty adamant that there wouldn't be a cut, so we, we'll try again. I mean, now that Eliza Paul is retiring, we can try with the next director. But, anyway, all right, we have a motion in a second. All in favor? All opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you.
5.0 Routine Business. 5.1 City Manager Update and Report to City Council on Various Items That Require No Action, Including Seabrook Boards and Commissions, Transportation Projects, Port of Houston Rails, City of Seabrook CIP Projects, City Website Update, Economic Development Updates, and the City of Seabrook Grant Administration. Gail?
All right, Mayor and Council, just a minute. All right, so Boards and Commissions, just a couple of meetings since your last council meeting, we had a P&amp;Z, four, four, it was 1-7 Toddville, R1 to R2, and then the final hearing on the quiet warehousing, as well as the final plat for Seabrook Town Center. So, a couple of these we'll be hearing at council level on the first two. And then on the OST Committee, park projects were presented by Sean Landis over, and to the OST, so we, when we did our workshop with council, we went through parks, water, all of those, so Sean took back over for the recommending body to see what the park projects were. They, in turn, then voted, like we did last year, to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down on giving you recommendations. So, when we come back to our next budget workshop and we go back into our capital program, we'll be sharing those recommendation sheets with you as well. The 146 project, it has been a little quiet. I did check in with our TechDOT rep and our Weber rep, and so they said that they are probably still a couple of months out from probably pulling all the equipment, so they're, they're a little bit delayed than what they anticipated at the end of, what they had said. So, the completion list that they're working on are pavers, sods, sidewalk work, they've got some, a couple of driveway adjustments to make, and then the detention pond completion on the north side. The second 146 project down at the Red Bluff intersection, you've seen quite a bit of work happening over the last few weeks on this one, and so the third lane on both sides, you're starting to see that cut on the sidewalls. If you look over at the Lone Star Camp on the other side of that intersection, you can see that they're prepping, and they'll have the MSC wall design, so we did get the city logo, and, and when they make these cuts, we'll get the MSC wall started on this intersection, and hopefully here before the end of the year. Just wanted to mention again, I've been in correspondence with the TechDOT reps on what they call access management study. Chief has been sending meticulously all of our crash data, so we are seeing a pretty significant downfall on most of the intersections that we were experiencing during construction. However, we are seeing some minor accidents that are happening along NASA Parkway, and so this has been on the radar for about eight years, and they finally moved it over to a bidding process, so talking with them today, they actually have a consultant, and they're having to do a prioritization of all the projects. NASA Parkway has made it to the top of that list. Once that is actually approved, it is a year study, there will be public meetings that have to be held by TechDOT to look at the design that they're gonna be proposing. Crash data will be an element of that, so this will, again, will be a very public process when they kick this off. City Updates. Kevin and Bryner reporting that we are almost there, we're still at about just over 50% on the wastewater treatment plant. We have a subcontractor that's due back here next week, hopefully, to make some final connections to reverse those flows, and then we'll be at 100, probably almost 100% of all the city's flows. So, we're, we're almost there, but we do have some coordination with that subcontractor. On our water projects, they've kicked off officially in Red Oak Acres for the waterline project, so if you drove through there, you can see the materials and some work starting 136, excuse me, 146 interconnect and the Geon interconnect are still pending, so on the old 146, we've got Harris County looking at that, and we've got held up on that. And then again, on that Geon, we're still waiting with Pasadena to go into design. Basically, we need some place to plug in, and that's not ready yet. Seascape is under design and waiting on that water project to release. The wastewater side, again, we've got the Forest Main improvements, that's still in design. We've contracted with Cobb Finley, and we're doing some sampling on the wastewater treatment plant over here on Main Street for its demolition, and then Pine Gully Lift Station, the exposed Forest Main line over there is in design as well. So, they have been very busy. New element on the routine business tonight, but again, there's been a lot of talk. We've alerted council that the update to the website was finally finished, and there's a new look and feel and drive on the website, as well as Amanda and her team putting that out to the public. So, hopefully, you've had the opportunity. It does look and feel a little bit different, but I think the upgrades are modern and have made a, a big improvement to, especially on the alerts and the homepage, and some of the sub-pages as well. With the recording of the council news, you can see it's a little bit easier to navigate on those pages. And then Grants, we've still been working quite a bit. I know I've, I've mentioned, I think we're going on year three now on the generators, but we've had multiple conversations this last couple of weeks between Kevin Rogers and Emergency Management, our consulting team, and we finally, I think, moved the mark on those generators, so it's, I'm excited to say, I think it's in technical review with FEMA. Interpreted into layman's terms, I think we're almost there. So, before next storm, maybe we can at least get the generators ordered. I think our next challenge on those will be the lead time of getting them, so maybe by the third storm, we'll have the generators, but we still got the grant, so it's a big win. We still have our outstanding PD warrant, our grants, in addition to the one that Jimmy in IT has taken out, so the ARPA Funds, quite a bit of activity still in our grant. And with that, I'll conclude if there's any questions.
Any questions, council? Hey, 5.2 Establish Future Meeting Dates and Agenda Items.
Mayor and Council, your next meeting takes place on July 16th at 6:00 PM. I also want to remind you about a couple of upcoming budget workshops, special meetings, the first of which is July 23rd at 6:00 PM, and the next one would be July 31st at 6:00 PM.
So, three weeks in a row?
It's three weeks in a row. Well, it's four weeks in a row, yes, sir.
Hey, Gail, is the recorded meetings gonna be back on the next agenda for the pilot program?
So, we've looked at that, and I think it's the first meeting in September is what we have it on our schedule for. Well, we're not done with the 18th, or the 18th meeting, and I think was, 18 was the number in the pilot program, yeah, so I was just...
What pilot?
After the 18.
What are we talking about?
Where our recorded meetings are on the pilot program, and I thought it was, that mid-July is what she told me last, but she's telling me it's September, so that's when we'll review it again and decide, so it's 18 meetings.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? It is 7:03. So, here's, the 10 people that were posted are gonna be mad at him.